W T O L L F meteorologist John Birchfield.
The following is a special presentation of thirteen thirty W F I N and ninety five five F M. Welcome to tonight's political forum on thirteen thirty W F I N, W F I N dot com, and now at ninety five five F M.
Tonight's forum presented by the Hancock County Republican Party.
Good evening. I'm Chris Oaks, and thank you for joining us for our final candidate forum ahead of the primary election this evening, featuring the three individuals running for Hancock County Commissioner in the Republican primary, Holly Frisher, Holly Frishy, Jeff Hunker, and Jeff Whoopser. Hopefully that'll be the last time I do that tonight. Welcome to all of you. Once again, this evening, as with last week, we have three responses, obviously, to each of the questions this evening, so we're going to compress the response times a bit in order to cover as much ground as possible. Each candidate will be allotted a minute thirty seconds for responses, and then follow-up questions or further discussion between the candidates will be allotted forty-five seconds. And so with that, let's begin with two minutes each for opening remarks, and we'll begin with Ms. Frishy.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everybody. Thank you to Chris and Mike for hosting the W F I N forum this evening. My name is Holly Frishy, and I am running for Hancock County Commissioner because I believe dedication and experience matter. Growing up, if you would have asked me if I had interest in seeking political office, my answer would have been no. Then in two thousand and thirteen, I was encouraged to run for Finley City Council, and I did. From two thousand and fourteen to twenty twenty, I served as councilwoman, and I loved getting to know the citizens, answering their questions, and serving as a voice in city government. I returned to council in two thousand and twenty-two, when I was appointed by the Republican Party to fill the unexpired term in my ward for city council. I serve in that position today. During my years on council, I have demonstrated my understanding of how government works, speaking up and asking questions to better define complex legislation while supporting the process of properly vetting legislation and bringing the facts to the table before voting. I chaired Water and Sewer Committee, served on Park and Rec, Street and Sidewalk, Planning and Zoning and Appropriations. I also bring to the table my banking experience, seventeen years of business, property, and personal management experience, along with my current seven years as a licensed health and life insurance agent. My deciding factor for entering this race was when I realized I could no longer sit back and watch our county change before my eyes. Our county deserves a commissioner who is willing to stand up and have those tough conversations, one who will work together with all government agencies to make sure Hancock County thrives and continues to be the home we all love. Hancock County, it's my home and yours. The city is part of the county, and it's time to work together to make sure our conservative values are maintained for years to come, and that's why I'm asking for your vote of support tonight.
Mr. Hunker.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, W F I N, and thank you, audience. My name is Jeff Hunker. I lived the first nine years of my life in Fostoria and the rest of my childhood on a farm outside of Fostoria. I went to the Ohio State University and received a bachelor's degree in agriculture, majoring in ag economics, acquiring knowledge and skills to be efficient and effective in the world of agriculture. I spent my whole career working in agriculture, our largest Hancock County industry. My thirty-four years living in Hancock County have consisted of living in Finley as well as rural Liberty Township. I bring a unique perspective as a candidate to the commissioner race because of my ten-plus years as a Liberty Township trustee. We're the size of a small city with over seven thousand residents, nearly two times the size of Bluffton. This consists of a split between agricultural, rural residential, and bedroom community, the same skills that I mentioned earlier, efficiency and effectiveness I would bring to the commissioner's office. Because of my leadership as president of the Township Association, the Hancock Regional Planning around areas of community and business growth, along with being chairman of the District Advisory Council of the Health Department, over the past few years, I have been strongly encouraged to run for commissioner, which I committed to at the start of two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
And Mr. Whoopser.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you to Blanchard River Broadcasting and W F I N for hosting this event tonight. My name is Jeff Whoopser, and I was born and raised in Hancock County. I went to the University of Tennessee, and where I received a degree in business. After that, I went to work for Marathon, and I was there for thirty-two years. When I returned back to Finley in two thousand and one, when I got transferred back to Finley, I took over or started on city council in two thousand and fifteen, where I was the Chair of Appropriations and Strategic Planning Committee. As I've gone through this process of campaigning and getting ready to campaign for this commissioner's seat, I learned or met with a lot of previous and current commissioners to get an idea of what the job entails and what they felt that the main responsibilities of the job were. It really broke down to three things. Number one, management. Management of people, because there's a small group of employees that do report to the commissioners, management of budgets and major projects, much like the major project that sits behind us that Mr. Bechtel is managing. And also, and probably the most important, is management of relationships, the eighty-three other elected officials in this county that, plus the elected officials in the cities and villages that you have to work with to get things done. For that reason, I am here tonight, asking you for your vote, is because that I believe I'm the most qualified candidate to fulfill those responsibilities. Thank you.
None of you are new to voters. You all, as you have mentioned, currently hold public office, but unlike running for city council or township trustee, you are here tonight asking for the vote of the entire county's citizenry. I want to give you, and I know, again, you all touched on this in your opening remarks, but I want to expand on, have each of you expand on why you decided to seek this open commissioner's seat and why now, and we'll begin once again with Ms. Frishy.
You're not rotating. So I made the decision to run for county commissioner because I feel that Hancock County is at a crossroad, and depending on the path that we take, we'll make a determination of what we will be in the next two, five, or even ten years. I believe the core of those discussions comes from economic development, and we need to readdress what the citizens have been saying and wanting higher-paying jobs. We want to address the townships with the annexation to make sure that they are kept whole, and we have to improve the communication to be able to get the job done right.
Mr. Whoopser.
When I started to run for city council, I did this for the same reason that I that I coach. I wanted to make sure that the youth in our county have the same opportunities when when they grow up as I did when I was growing up. It was the things that the this community gave to me, or opportunities that were here that allowed me to excel and have a great career with Marathon and then have the opportunity to come back. So my goal for running for commissioner is specifically to make sure that we continue to have those opportunities here in the city of Finley and in the entire county of Hancock County. A lot of things go into that, as we've seen over the last five years, as the city's embarked on our strategic plan and got that into place. One of the main things that came out of those conversations with our community was, everybody likes Finley because Finley and Hancock County is what it is. They don't want to be Lima, they don't want to be Toledo, they don't want to be a larger community. So my job, as I see it, is to make sure that we continue to grow, because you have to grow, or otherwise you will die, and but still have that same look, feel, and have those same opportunities for our youth as we go forward into the future.
And Mr. Hunker.
My reason, primary reason for running was having an understanding of what actually goes on in the commissioner's office. I've been in relationships with those county commissioners for ten years now. Those county commissioners and me know each other on a first-name basis. We have known each other. We have built relationships. I have built relationships with many of the county officials, elected officials. We know each other. Now, we know there's challenges. Right now, I live in Liberty Township. I have had challenges. We have issues with city sewer and water coming outside the city limits. I want to make that a nice, working relationship. It hasn't always been that way. So there's there's things like that that I want to do. I have the relationship. I'm on cross-functional boards, which includes city, county, township, and villages already. I have the relationships. I want to utilize those relationships and improve what's out there already. We all know we have challenges. Everything in life, you have challenges. But we have some things that are going good also, and I want to be a part of it, and I want to continue to make it better, and that's that's my main goal.
One of the first matters that you are likely to consider if elected has to do with the big building that we can see going up right across the street from us here at the Marathon Center for the Performing Arts, the new County Criminal Justice Center that is scheduled for completion later this year. When it is fully operational, it will bring up the question of what to do with the current building that houses the probate and juvenile court. What do you believe should be done with that facility once it is vacated? And for this one, we'll start with Mr. Whoopser.
Boy, that's a that's a tough one to start with, Chris. I think that that building, much like the situation with the jail, is kind of a multi-leg issue. You've got to look at the historic value of that, although there's only a really small portion of that building that is historic, the rest of it was added on to over time. Does it serve a better purpose in a historic value? There will be a group of people in our community that I guarantee you will step up and will want to see that remain there for that specific reason. Or is that land better utilized for something else? For instance, could it be a parking garage? Boy, I kind of hate to say that from the standpoint of taking a historic building and turning it into a parking lot. I think there was a song about that. But I think it's going to take a lot of conversation. There's no easy answers to that, much like the jail. It's going to take a lot of conversation and discussion amongst all the different groups. We've got issues that we'll have to continue to look at. You know, the Justice Center is going to be a beautiful building, it's going to serve a great purpose, but we know we've got parking issues that are coming with that, and that'll be, I suspect, might be on your list later on down the road there, Chris, but so I won't get into that right now.
Mr. Hunker.
Unlike Mr. Whoopser, I don't see that as a difficult decision. That building, knowing the county's budget and all the needs that the county has right now, and the budget being tight as it has been, I mean, right now, there's some surplus there, but there are going to be needs and costs with this new building. Anytime you build new, as many of the schools have found out, it's not cheap to run a new building. So my decision, my vote, is that the building comes down. I honestly, I see the value, I see the architectural beauty of it, but there comes a time when you have to make tough decisions, and in my eyes, and having what I think is an understanding of the budget, I think there's a lot more higher priorities than that, honestly, so I see the building coming down.
And Ms. Frishy.
Well, I I don't see the building coming down, per se. I think we are still in those discussions of having a parking plan, a downtown plan, and and how we're going to operate together with the city. With that being said, there's still use for a lot of those buildings. I would love to see the county work together with the city because we are limited on our space in the municipal building, and there could be some needs there. I think parking is a separate discussion from that, and I don't think we should jump too quickly to think, tear it down, make it parking.
Let's continue on that conversation since the subject of parking is, you know, parking plan has been brought up, and again, to the extent that the Justice Center will contribute to the issues that that exacerbate that. To what extent are the commissioners, part of that conversation, should be responsible for for that conversation, and what can the commissioners contribute to that discussion moving forward? We'll start with Mr. Hunker.
Okay. The parking issue, obviously, is a complex issue. Before this building was built over here, there was a building there, then there wasn't a building. So you had you had parking at one time, you don't have parking now, parking's always an issue. The commissioners have an obligation to try to help. The commissioners do not have a commitment or a responsibility that they have to. The zoning of the city of Finley says that they don't have to do that, basically, based on the zoning. I was just made aware of that today. So although the the county doesn't necessarily have to, they should be a good player in it, and I think they will be, the commissioners will be. Obviously, at one time, there was a city parking garage downtown. I was made aware that the city sold that at one time for a hundred dollars because they didn't want to maintain it. So we have a history of parking issues. When the money's good, it's good. When it's bad, it seems like we get rid of things. So we've got to address the issue. It's divisive, and we need to address it. Where it goes, you know, how it goes, all players have to be willing to talk.
Ms. Frishy.
So the parking situation in downtown, we all have to work together to figure out that solution. No, there is not any parking regulation in downtown that if you have a business, you have to have X amount of parking spaces. It's kind of silly when we have it everywhere else, but we can't just ignore the situation. We have too many employees in the county, too many employees in the city, and too many people working in downtown not to work together to figure this out. Back several years ago, I had talked with Commissioner Bechtel and said, hey, we have some plans to work together and maybe use to talk about putting a parking garage maybe on Broadway, or we can do one in the municipal lot. There's different locations where we can work together, along with the businesses in downtown, to take care of this parking problem. No matter how healthy everybody is, nobody wants to walk to get to their destination. That's just what it is.
Mr. Whoopser. I think that the commissioners may not have an obligation to work on parking, but they also have a lot of employees that they have an obligation to to make sure that they can get to work in a reasonable manner. So to me, that is an obligation to the people that they employ. The situation that happened with our commissioners and with the mayor and the agreement on property that they that came up, that blew up, that was on the front page of the paper, I'm sure everybody's aware with, was two things. It was, first off, it was embarrassing for our county and for our community, and it's expensive. Anytime we have a situation like this, where our different sides of our government are not communicating and we have to go public, in a situation like that, all we're doing is wasting time and money. The Justice Center is a great example of that, where we're at today, something that's costing us about twenty-one million. Had it been done on time when it was first requested, it would have been about nine million. So we need to come to an agreement on all of this between the two, and it takes somebody to build those relationships.
Mr. Hunker.
Yes. I want to clarify. I do believe the county does have responsibility for their own employees, obviously. I think somewhat that conversation, the way it went, was expecting maybe more than that. I think each each entity has to bring something to the table, and and that's a hard thing because we have a vibrant downtown here, and every vacant lot, any opportunity there is, we want to build on. We want to have another vibrant business. So we have to work at balancing that. That's a challenge. I mean, space comes at a premium, space downtown is high-dollar space, but you have to balance all of it out for what you really need.
Ms. Frishy.
Just to elaborate on Mr. Whoopser's comment, it should never be embarrassing when you see that city and county or any elected officials are having discussion. It's important to have that discussion. Sometimes it gets a little heated. It's not the end of the world. We have to come to those decisions, and sometimes we have to find that give and take. I think that the county and the city are working on that, and the county has been working on on obtaining these parking lots since I was on council in two thousand and thirteen, and I thought we had it resolved then. We just didn't do the paperwork, I guess. So it's not embarrassing to have a conversation. It doesn't mean somebody's against something, it's working it out.
And Mr. Whoopser.
I appreciate what Jeff had to say, and he's right. We do have a responsibility to get this done, but this just shows that what's been going on for quite some time is the distrust between the county and the city, and there's plenty of blame to go around. There is nobody that's more at fault than another. That is a falsehood if you think that somebody's more at blame. What it takes is somebody actually sitting down and having a conversation, and Holly's right, conversation is good. However, I don't think it needs to be done when you have a contract that was taken care of, was agreed upon, and was going to be signed, that was changed at the last minute without the other party knowing.
Ms. Frishy.
So I've been attending those commissioner meetings. I'm actually the only consistent candidate up here who's been attending those meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that contract has been sitting out there since June of last year, and then it's just re-revved up. And yes, the courier was there. It was a discussion. Let's just leave it at that.
Mr. Hunker.
I'm not going to comment about the contract, but I am going to comment about attending commissioner's meetings. Yes, maybe Ms. Councilwoman Frishy has been, Councilwoman Frishy, sorry, has been attending commissioner meetings recently. She wasn't there when I was there over the last ten years. She wasn't there at the budget meetings when I sat through all three days of budget meetings. Those are some of the relationships that you build and some of the understanding that you get. You don't show up at the last minute and think that you're going to learn everything and be up to speed. So I think she's trying to play catch-up right now.
Ms. Frishy.
I'm not the catch-up girl. I have always been attending meetings. I've been the city woman, the city councilwoman that you found out, meeting and supporting the residents and the townships when it came to wind and solar, and when it came to sunny farms, wind waste. I'm the person who goes to those budget meetings. I've worked with the commissioners over the years, petitioning Dazzle Ditch. I served our community and the city and the county, and I have worked with our commissioners well.
I think we've exhausted that point. We're going to take a quick reset. We've got much more ground to cover, but we've reached just about the midway point of this evening. We'll take a quick break. We'll be back with more of our candidate forum, featuring the candidates for Hancock County Commissioner on W F I N.
Your news authority is thirteen thirty W F I N and now at ninety five five F M. The Hancock County Republican Party would like to remind you to join them for their first Friday luncheons. Enjoy a great meal, network with fellow Republicans, and listen to a featured speaker. Luncheons are held at Finley Moose Lodge, six ninety-eight. Meal at eleven thirty, program at noon. March first, candidates for state representative, eighty-third Ohio District. April twelfth, city of Finley update from Mayor Byrne. May third, Hancock County update from commissioners. Please support local, state, and national candidates. For more information on upcoming events and the new office location, visit HancockCountyGOP.org. Your first look at business and the business of life happens each weekday morning on W F I N. Hi, this is Gordon Deal, inviting you to join me at five A M. for this morning, America's first news. We'll give you the top money and business news and information about managing your money and retirement savings. Plus, there's the latest on technology, e-commerce, careers, health, entertainment, and much more. This morning, weekdays at five A M., and check out the weekend edition, Saturday mornings at five on thirteen thirty W F I N, W F I N dot com, and now at ninety five five F M. Take W F I N wherever you go with our updated mobile apps for iPhone and Android, and now you can listen to us on your Alexa device. Get the app at W F I N dot com or in the App Store or Google Play. Plus, enable Alexa by searching for W F I N under Skills, and you'll soon be saying, Alexa, play thirteen thirty W F I N. And the best part is the apps and skills are absolutely free. On the air at thirteen thirty W F I N and ninety five five F M, online at W F I N dot com, and on your smartphone, tablet, and Alexa devices.
It's the Weekly Show on W F I N where we focus on Ohio sports. This is Matt Andrews. It's the Ohio Sports Magazine, Sunday mornings at eight on your Sports Authority, thirteen thirty W F I N, W F I N dot com, and ninety five five F M.
Your news authority is thirteen thirty W F I N and now at ninety five five F M.
Welcome back to this evening's candidate forum ahead of the primary election. Again, this evening, we are featuring the three individuals running for Hancock County Commissioner in the Republican primary, Holly Frishy, Jeff Hunker, and Jeff Whoopser. We've been talking about facilities and facilities needs, and Holly, you brought this up earlier in some of your comments, the fact that space is at a premium both for the county and for the for the city as well. Currently, the county leases space for some county operations. There have been discussions about consolidating and moving all operations to owned space, most famously, in the recent past, the rejected plan to repurpose the Finley Mall. Is leased space a satisfactory plan long-term, or should the county continue to explore moving all of its operations to own space? And we'll start with Ms. Frishy.
It's always a good idea to be in our own space and not paying rent for things. With the discussion on the future of our jail and how we're going to address that, whether we are going to maintain what we have or build new, if we build new, they have opportunity there to maybe bring some of our other agencies under roof with us. We also have opportunity to work with the city and maybe support them a little bit in some additional space if we decide to move our jail out onto one forty. But looking to lease space, I'm not really seeing that need at this point. I think we just need to get the rest of our wheelhouse in order.
Mr. Whoopser.
The, when it comes to leased space versus owned space, it just comes down to a cost per square foot and which is better for their needs. For instance, we're, we have the Veterans Affairs are out in the old Kodak Building on Main Cross, and that space is actually being expanded, works very well for them, but it's it's a little expensive, too, but it works extremely well for their needs. Now, moving them someplace else might be difficult, but at the end of the day, it's just an economic cost-benefit analysis of making sure that you're getting the best cost per square foot and still meeting the needs of whatever that group has or what they need. Yes, the opportunity with the jail may, may not, end up giving us a chance to consolidate some of those groups that are out outside in leased space and bring them into owned property. And obviously, if that building, the jail, has been there for quite some time, so our cost per square foot would be less versus building new. So again, it just goes back to making sure that we've got the cost, the best cost per square foot, and the property and the facility that meets the needs of the group.
And Mr. Hunker.
The the issue of leased space, we already have, obviously, leased space. We, with this building across the street, will have some space in there for some of the operations to move in there, so that will free up some of the space. Now, the question has to be asked, what will move into that empty space in the in the building where the commissioner's office is at? I do know that I would like to see the Veterans Affairs in a in a different place myself, and I do know that the Board of Elections needs more space with all this early voting. That and that has caused an additional cost to the county as well. So I know their their budget, they'd like more money, and they need more space. So there are issues, there's, you've got to work through it. I don't like leased space if you don't have to. I mean, obviously- I mean, obviously, the price per square foot makes a difference, but if you do have empty space, move something you have already into that and fully utilize what you have. I mean, we're still recovering from the flood of 2007. We still have some in leased space from then. So we need to do what we can do. Thank you.
Which brings us to the next big question when it comes to county facilities, and it's been hinted at quite a bit already. You have all brought up the needs of the Hancock County Jail, both tonight and during your campaigns. During our forum last week, however, the Hancock County Sheriff candidates all downplayed the need for a new jail. When asked, they did not cite that as an immediate or desperate need. So I'll ask you, from your perspective, how significant of a priority do you view this to be? And we'll begin with Mr. Whoopser.
The jail situation is a multi-tentacled monster. We have the current jail, which needs upgrading. It's 30 years old. We've spent quite a bit of money on maintenance on it. It's going to cost us a lot of money going forward, and to get it up to speed, it's going to cost quite a bit. But we don't know what that cost is yet versus building new. There's a lot of people that think that building out on 140 is the best place to be. That may be the case, but the fact of the matter is, we don't know yet what that is. Right now, the jail is about 70% capacity. That's for a couple of different reasons. Number one, the city took their business elsewhere. Part of the reason that the city no longer houses inmates there is because of the cost. The daily cost is cheaper to go someplace else. And also, there was a period of time when staffing, which is still a problem with the corrections officers, the sheriff asked us to move our people out, which we did, and we've just chose not to come back at this point. The city has not. So there's a lot of things that are going to go into the decision to make that jail. It's a very expensive proposition, somewhere between $90 and $150 million. It is not going to be an easy decision, and that will be one if we go forward that will have to require almost every bit, every person in our elected government to be involved in that, to have their input so that we do the right thing.
Mr. Hunker.
Although I feel that a jail is needed, based on my knowledge, my experience walking through the jail personally, my experience talking to individuals that work daily in the jail, ultimately, that's a decision that's a community decision. I serve on the Community Action Committee studying potential new jail. There will be an upcoming recommendation coming out soon. That committee has worked very diligently to come up with answers. So, but let me be clear. Currently, I see no path moving forward with the Justice Center under the current financials in the Hancock County budget. Therefore, the judges, the sheriff's office, police department, other elected officials are going to have to work together, try to come up with something. And there needs to be open and honest discussion. And based on the decision that comes down, that decision will be from the citizens of Hancock County before a vote. And it may be a ways away, but that's the way it has to proceed. So, thank you.
Ms. Frishy.
I think it's great that Township Trustee Hunker is changing his tune a little bit on that, because in other discussions, I've heard about him being in favor of raising the taxes to build a new jail. But as far as from my own view on that, the jail is a big discussion. It's multifaceted. We're going to have a new sheriff in town. I'm excited for that. Any of the three candidates, it's going to be great. We're going to see a lot of things going on. And the first thing we're going to have to figure out is staffing. Staffing the jail, improving our road workers and so forth, our deputies. And then we have to talk about where we want the jail to go and what the community wants the jail to be. Do we want it to be in downtown? Do we want it to be on 140? Are we willing to pay for that tax increase to get it done? But we are maintaining that jail. We are doing maintenance to that building as we speak, so we're not ignoring the facility and letting it crumble. So I think that is important to know as well.
Mr. Hunker.
I don't recall ever saying that I'm in favor of raising taxes. I'm in favor of putting it before the voters, and the voters make that decision. Do I think there is a need? Yes, I think there's a need. Do I think that all parties need to come together and support a common cause? Yes, I think so. When you're sending, as I believe Councilman Whoopser said, sending city prisoners out, which currently is to the cheapest bidder, that's only going to become a cheaper bidder as long as we keep using an older jail, because the older jail isn't as efficient as the newer ones. So we're dealing with that issue, and the city doesn't necessarily have a contract.
Ms. Frishy.
So whether the city contracts with the county or not to put our inmates into the jail, that's up to the city. We need to plan accordingly for what we feel our future needs are going to be for Hancock County. And if the city wants to use our jail, great, we'll have a great rate for them. And if they want to use it, and if they want to get it someplace cheaper, they're more than welcome to do so.
Ms. Hunker.
That won't work. That's flat-out not going to work. The only way you can do it is if everyone is together. Government doesn't work well when one does their thing and another does their own thing, and they go in different ways, and when you have limited budgets. You have to work together, and you have to find common ground. Now, if that means that there won't be a new jail, I guess there won't be a new jail. But, you know, the only way this works is all hands on deck, working together. And we're not big enough to try to do what Lucas County is doing right now, where the county does one thing and the city does something different. We're not Lucas County. So that's been a challenge up there.
Mr. Whoopser.
And I would just add that Jeff's correct. We have to work together because the economics on any new jail or even the renovation of the old jail will not work unless we get a contract for the city inmates to come in there. What's it going to take to get that done? Well, it's going to take people sitting down and actually having civil conversations and coming up with contracts that they can agree upon. And those are the things that I work on and do very well and have those relationships to be able to get that done.
Ms. Frishy.
And before we can get to that point, we have to get our staffing under control to be able to handle a bigger jail.
Let's move on. For quite some time, there has been discussion over the future of the recycling program in Hancock County. Concerns over costs, staffing levels, and the location of litter landing, just to name a few. In December of last year, the commissioners voted to take bids from potential contractors in order to consider the alternative of outsourcing the entire operation while emphasizing that no decision has yet been made. What would you like to see done with the county recycling program? And for this, we'll begin with Mr. Hunker.
The recycling program is a challenging thing. The, obviously, if you're going to improve the recycling program, the current site doesn't have the space, doesn't have the operations, doesn't have what it needs to be efficient. There has been struggles with employees, with number of employees. There's been numerous struggles with the recycling that's been brought in there, because throughout the county, there's been something like 20 different bins dropped off, and they stopped putting three or four of them out there because people are abusing it. So we talk about recycling. I love to see recycling. Recycling comes at an enormous price, and it even becomes a more enormous price if people abuse it. I would love to see it. I mean, there's been talk about out on 140. There's talk right now of a contract. I guess we see where it goes. Obviously, the one thing that is certain, moving forward, something new has to be done, and that additionally will cost money, because the site currently on the east side isn't enough to do what we need to do. It's not automated enough either. So that's my thoughts.
Ms. Frishy.
Litter landing. I went out there and visited one day. 400 cars go through there a day. There is a big desire for recycling, and I agree with that. The recycling program is not a moneymaker. What we're doing is we're preserving our landfills, and that's important. So as far as workers go, our workers got a big surprise that there's a possible new opportunity coming where we're going to use a third party. And it might work, and it might save us some money, but they knew they were going to be out of jobs. So some folks have been staying the task to see it through. Some of them are finding other jobs and moving on. We used to have more volunteers. That doesn't happen as much as it used to, and it's a dirty job. I wouldn't want to do it, but I know we need litter landing, we need our recycling program, and we have to not treat it solely as a business transaction because it's a little bit different. It's not there to make money, but it is there to save us money on the landfill side. So we do need it. I want to see something happen on that litter landing site. I'm not against looking at this third party and seeing what clawback clauses we're going to have and where the money savings is going to be.
And Mr. Whoopser.
Because we have a landfill, we have to have a recycling program by state law. So something's got to be done with this. Recycling does not make money. It used to be that the materials that we would send off and sell was enough to maintain the cost of the recycling center. That is not the case anymore. So it's an expense all the way around. Commissioner Bateson, I believe, is in charge of this project, and in conversations with him, he said that the recycling business is costing the county about $800,000 per year. Now, I'm not going to say those numbers are right. That was a number he gave me, so I'll go with that. So it's a big expense, and I think, though, that we've got to find a way to be able to maintain it, because we have to. It's not a choice. We have to be able to have recycling. What is the best way to do that? They are looking at a third party. Third party has its issues also. My guess is, it looks like what the commissioners currently want to do is give that a try. You know what? I don't think that's a bad idea. Give it a try, see if it will work for a period of time. Maybe give, I think there were only two or three people that gave bids on that. Give it a try, couple years, two, three, four years, see if it works. If it doesn't, then we can come back and take a look and see if we need to do it ourselves, because in four years, a lot of things could change on commodity prices. Plus, it may be better time to buy that equipment that is needed to run our own recycling system.
Couple of responses. First of all, Mr. Hunker.
Yes, each of my two opponents here have stated some good points. The number of vehicles, obviously, are high for this current site. The current site would need major renovation, and I still don't think it has enough space. I've heard objections to moving it out to County Road 140, where there is space. So that's a difficult decision to make. If you don't have the space where you're at, you don't have the automation. You do have the opportunity on a different site to do it. That's one thing where you shouldn't look at. Third party, yes, that's where we're at. You know, for now, we'll go with it. People need to quit abusing it. Thank you.
And Ms. Frishy.
So we actually only had one bid come into the county. I was at that meeting in the morning. And since then, they've done a little bit of review in those morning commissioner meetings, and I feel like we're looking at maybe closer to $500,000, so there is some savings. But I also think it's worth the conversation to talk with the city, because 90% of those vehicles that are going to be, that are coming through litter landing on Sandusky Street are city residents. And then another part of it is, we had a packaging bailing facility over on 12. We're going to be losing that facility as well, so we'll lose some of the capability to do some of the things on our own. But I think, no matter what we do, if we end up putting bins at litter landing, we need some other locations in the city as well.
There have always been concerns over the interrelation between city and county government, and I think as long as we've been holding these forums, candidates have talked about improving those relations and the communication between elected officials, the county and the city. Given the fact that it has come up in multiple parts of this conversation, I take it that you feel that this is still an area of concern. So I'll ask the question, what do you feel is the key to improving that relationship, and how would you approach that challenge? And we'll begin with Ms. Frishy.
The key to improving communication is we have to take everybody's personal emotional feelings out of it. I know that's hard sometimes, and I know when people look from the outside in, they think things are more personal than what they are. But sometimes, we just need to take a step back. We need to hear each side, and if one party is saying they want something done differently, well, maybe there's a way we can get it done that way. Maybe we do two contracts. Maybe we adjust the wording and make sure that everybody is being heard. So communication has got to improve in the city and the county. I mean, with the townships, the townships get forgotten a lot when things are happening with economic development. I think we need to have better communication and letting them know what's going on in our community so we can make sure everybody's whole at the end of the day.
Mr. Whoopser.
The main thing here is communication. You've got to talk to each other. Nationally, our political situation is a complete mess. Washington is in terrible disarray. Our own Republican Party at the national level is struggling at best. And it goes back to everybody's in their own corners. Everybody likes their position. They don't want to talk to the other people. And this is kind of where we're at today with our city and county. And actually, it's not just Finley, it's some of the other smaller villages also. Goes back to communication. We've got to talk to each other. It's difficult, I understand, because you've only got three commissioners. If two of them are together, it's an official meeting, and then you're subject to sunshine laws. So it can only be one person, but that person's got to then communicate with the other two. And you've got to come up with consensus. It is not an easy thing. That's why they've been working on it, Chris, forever. And it'll probably be working on it long after we're done here also. But you have to continue to work at it, because it is and must be top priority of, to be able to get those, our different parts of government to work together. We cannot forget the townships. We've got to keep them involved in these conversations as we move forward.
And Mr. Hunker.
The conversations have to take place. As Councilwoman Frishy said, the emotions have to be taken out of it. The players that are involved in the issue have to be included in the conversation. I've directly been involved, unlike these two, with some issues that have involved the commissioners and the city. I know firsthand how some of these things have taken place. I know how my feelings have been hurt at times. I know how, and I've learned how, and what I need to bring up in the conversations that take place. You educate yourself when you feel as though you weren't heard. We've got some issues with water and sewer going outside the city limits. We've got an issue right now at Spring Lake in my township and Eagle Township. The city came to the engineer's office originally. They did that with other issues, Bittersweet and Boobonnet Streets. Sewer was run out there without asking the township, without asking the county commissioners, to my understanding, and they have the authority whether or not that goes outside the city limits. So yes, there's faults on the commissioner's side. Yes, there's faults probably on the township's side for not speaking up, and yes, there's faults on the city's side.
Mr. Whoopser.
The, further down that road, the lack of communication and just fomets this issue where we think each other's lying or lying by omission, same thing. Great example of that is County Road 212 and 236, the interchange there. Going back and talking with the trustees, they felt like they had been absolutely lied to by the city. They were told that there would be a traffic light there, and that's what they had counted on. Then, at the last minute, they comes out with a design, and there's no traffic light. Well, they're upset, and rightfully so. Somewhere along the line, the city had changed their mind and decided not to put a traffic light there, and as we all know, that brought everything to a screeching halt with that intersection.
Ms. Frishy.
I just wanna rebut Mr. Hunker saying that, you know, he's worked with the city and the county. And I'm sorry, his feelings have gotten hurt with regards to the water and sewer over in Spring Lake in Liberty Township. I've been on Water and Sewer Committee in the past, I attend a lot of those meetings in the city, and the townships aren't coming. They can't depend on one voice from the city to communicate everything back to the council side as well. And when I found out that there were things going on of concern, I looked into them and got back with those townships and said, here's where we're at. We can do better going forward, but we can't just say we're working with commissioners and a mayor. There's city council in there, there's departments and committees that also have a say.
And final 45 seconds for Mr. Hunker.
Okay. Councilwoman Frishy says that, but Councilwoman Frishy isn't the one that's, the one going and talking to the commissioners about these topics. So in many cases, the townships haven't been invited to the conversation. Now, in the future, I think maybe they will. But part of that may be too, that the townships haven't been aggressive enough to pursue things. I mean, I'm not gonna say the townships are all right or wrong, but the conversations have to take place, the commissioners have the authority on a lot of things. And I don't think all the parties involved know what rules and laws the commissioners have.
We're gonna have to make that the final word because we are out of time, we need to move on to the closing statements. We thank you all for a lively discussion this evening and we'll begin our closing remarks with Mr. Wobser.
Chris, thank you for this opportunity. Again, thank you to WFIN Blanchard River Broadcasting for allowing us the opportunity to talk to the community in multiple different ways here through the radio and through their Facebook streaming. You've had an opportunity now over the last three months to see all three of the commissioner candidates. And I think that one thing that you would probably agree, all three of us are fiscally conservative, small government Republicans. That's kind of a given for Republicans in our county. The question is then, who is the most qualified to fulfill the unique responsibilities of being a county commissioner? I believe that my upbringing, my education, my experience in both the private and public sector, and the fact that I will approach this as a full-time job and keep a very level head as we go through all of the different things that come at the commissioners on a daily basis, makes me the best person for this job. And for that reason, I am asking for your vote now through March 19th. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hunker.
One thing that did not come up tonight was some of the issues in the city. The, the cost of living, the, the economic levels. Clearly, the county's population has continued to grow with the major, while the major crime, drug, and housing cost issues continue to grow within our city. The city is the heart of the county and we must reverse this over a decade trend. Both my opponents have been on the council for most of this decade. We need them to focus on doing their current job better for the good of our community as a whole. This is a message voters should send to both of them, which is why I was the first candidate to enter this race before they decided later in 2023 to jump ship versus fighting for our city. Thank you for the opportunity to share with each of you tonight. I will do everything I can to represent the residents of Hancock County in an honorable way, if elected as Hancock County Commissioner. I approach this the same way I approach my spiritual life. I know what I believe, I know why I believe it, and I'm called to act upon it, and that is what I intend to do. I ask for your support on March 19th or before. Thank you.
And Ms. Frishy.
Dedication and experience, that's where I started my opening speech at this evening and it matters. Dedication and experience matter. I have that experience from my time on city council and my time working in and outside the city, helping citizens resolve issues. I will do that same thing in the county because the city is part of the county. I'm not abandoning the county. The city is part of the county and I'm gonna be working for everybody. If you have a question, I'm there to help. If there's an issue we need to resolve, I'm gonna have those tough conversations. And whether it gets emotional or somebody's feelings get hurt or anything, we're gonna have those conversations and do what's best for Hancock County. For me, the reason I got into this race is because I believe we're at a crossroad. Economic development is the core of that. We are seeing an influx in our population that we cannot manage. And that influx in population is bringing barriers. Our safety services are not prepared, our healthcare system is not prepared, our schools are not prepared, and our infrastructure and housing is not ready for all of this change. We are not bringing in the high-paying jobs that all of you have been asking for for five to 10 years. It is time to have a commissioner in that office that is gonna take a hard stand and say, no, it's not the right time, we need to wait, we need to get our wheelhouse in order. And that's what I'm there to do. I am there to be your voice. It's not about me, it's about you. And for me, the conservative values that Hancock County has always had, we don't wanna lose that. We wanna maintain our conservative values and make sure that Finley, Hancock County is a place that we wanna live, work, and raise a family. Right now, that crossroad that we are at is low-paying jobs with a transient workforce that brings barriers that we are not prepared for, and that's why I'm running.
We'd like to thank all three of the candidates for taking part in this evening's forum and thank you for joining us this evening. A reminder that early voting is now underway and Election Day itself is Tuesday, March 19th. I'm Chris Oakes, thank you for joining us, good night.